Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone, if you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our prayer this morning comes from James 3:18. You can develop a healthy, robust community that lives right with God and enjoy its results only if you do the hard work of getting along with each other, treating each other with dignity and honor. And our dog warden has our dog this morning.
Good morning. Today we have a appears to be a King Charles Cavalier Beagle mix. Picked up wandering the streets of Wellington last night, available for adoption on Saturday. We have thirty-three dogs, other dogs over there at the kennel, so why don't you come out and take a look? Appreciate it, thank you.
We have an appointment at 9:45 on Solar Co-op Resolutions Investments.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Bills.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Administrator Cordes.
Thank you, Commissioner Lundey. I do have just a few potential ideas at the collection center, discussions on ongoing negotiations and potential purchase of real estate. Counsel is not with us today, he was unavailable, so we won't have anything with litigation. So those three subjects are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So to ask at the conclusion of a regular board meeting, we go into executive session and we talk about those three issues. Thank you.
Or contract to M.A. Building and Maintenance Company, independence in amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred eleven dollars for Justice Center Brick Facade Restoration Project. Six bids were received on April 21st, this being most responsive, will be paid from capital improvement construction account. Issue notice proceed on or before July 22nd to complete on or before August 26th, and authorized administrator notify auditor release retained at completion of project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Can we have just a...
Yeah, please.
I mean, because the building's still fairly new and we're continuously working on the curtain wall on the building. This is the back area that when the wind is right and the rain is kind of heavy, I didn't know rain could go vertical, but it can when the wind's right.
You know, I would.
Right. We've been just having moisture problems and water problems in the back corner of one of the buildings, of this building. Just for the public, we litigated with this company that built the curtain wall on this building, we litigated substantially. They ended up going bankrupt and going out of business. We tried to press an issue with the bonding company, but our period of time to do so had almost elapsed or did lapse. We're still faced with these problems. If you recall, several years ago, we did a destructive testing. We actually went up, took brick out of the building, opened it up, looked behind the curtain wall, we found considerable amount of problems with expansion joints that had mortar in them rather than caulking and putty, so that the brick can expand and contract. We were starting to experience compression cracks in the bricks. It's one thing for a mortar joint to open, that'll happen with buildings settling, and any brick home or building will eventually need to be tuck pointed on the mortar joints. But to see a brick crack, that's definitely an indication of compression and poor installation. We've had some problems with compression cracking, and so we thought a couple of years ago, we had caught all the problems, went in, did destructive testing, did a large amount of work after that to correct all of that. But this area has remained very elusive. And part of the problem back there also is a lot of the flashing wasn't installed correctly, weeps weren't installed correctly, so when the conditions are right, we were still getting water. I'm hopeful that this will correct that last problem with the building. Because truly, the curtain wall should have been water sealed without having to do any kind of work on it for at least twenty-five or thirty years of its first life. This has been an ongoing problem, and I think it's proper that we tell people why we're doing this on a fairly new building and why we have been doing work on this building off and on for a few years.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract to Dellinger Excavating, Inc., Monroeville in amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents, which includes a contingency for the Hope Court Storm Sewer Road Widening Project. Two bids were received on April 22nd, this being most responsive, and will be paid from the CDBG PY-15 account, Contract Services. Issue notice proceed effective on or before May 10th and complete on or before October 1st. Authorized administrator notify the auditor to release retained at completion of project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorized purchase service program with Cavan Ground, the Cindy Nord Center for Renewal Oberlin for summer camp for low-income children using Tana funds in amount of thirty-three thousand, effective June 20, 2016 through July 29, 2016. Authorized Director to execute in behalf of court with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, implement a multi-family housing unit grant in accordance with the plan beginning in 2016 concluding in 2020. Seventy-five thousand annually to fund program number LC 38-1, multi-family housing unit recycling grant for apartment or other multi-family housing complex operator, and then thirty-five thousand annually to fund the program 38-2, which is multi-family housing unit recycling grant for city townships or villages.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, can you have, let me give Keith about four minutes.
Sure.
This doesn't sound like our usual program, that's self-explanatory. This one's kind of different.
Well, we worked on it through the new plan to get it in because multi-family apartments and such don't have the ability to recycle, they don't have multiple dumpsters and no blue bag pickup normally, so they don't have the cart system, so it was a program to start getting those residents who live in multi-family units to start recycling.
Yeah, I looked it over, I will be honest with you, Commissioner, I have my doubts about the utility, especially in multi-family units, to install the correct canisters and then make sure the correct materials get into those canisters.
Mobilization.
Yes. At home, you're sorting your own canisters, but in a multi-unit environment, you're counting on folks that may not care which dumpster they, or can they throw whatever into. So it's going to be interesting how this goes first year or two.
Well, that's why it's a small amount of money to see how it works.
And we have Director Keith Bailey here, maybe you can update us on this, and yeah, those are very important concerns here.
I know you have concerns. First of all, there's a limit on how much money you can apply for, that's seventy-five hundred, I think that's important to note. So we're looking for a few good programs to start off in the private sector as well as the public sector, provide multi-family housing. They will sign a MOU with the county, they will guarantee that they'll have it in place the second and third year, so it has to be some committed folks that want to pull off this program, all right? And we're looking for those committed folks, and we'll open the application process as soon as you approve. It's like everything we put in the plan, it says you will do a multi-family housing recycling thing. Well, now you have to set the rules, the parameters, build the application, and that's what we've done. So this is evolution, I think the Commissioners need to know that, that the top districts in the state offer these kind of programs. You don't find this in some of the lowly districts that don't have money, that are struggling to get along. Hamilton, Suaco, or just a few, Montgomery, offer these kind of programs. So this is the elite of elite that can offer these kind of programs out of their county.
Can you define a multi-unit? It's not a duplex.
No, it's not a duplex, it's apartment complex, a condominium complex. At Cherry Ridge, we do have recycling put in four years ago, not under my leadership, it was a bunch of grumpy old citizens that wanted recycling.
Let me ask you about the condominiums are owned by the property owners, where multi-units that are apartments are owned by a landlord. There's no distinction between people that own their units and people that rent their units in a multi-unit dwelling?
In a condominium, you would be dealing with the association, all right? And they would be the party, we would sign a MOU with their association board.
Right, we wouldn't be dealing with the individual homeowners, it's no different than any other corporations, if they're multi-family.
I would think a good place to start would be with some of these condo associations or things of that nature would be a good place to start.
The biggest gain we seen in Avon Lake, when we bid Avon Lake in the consortium, was the homeowners association stepping up the bat and told the city of Avon Lake, we want to be a part of this. So they got their carts. So the people want these things, so it'll happen. It may be on a large scale, but it'll be on a smaller scale to continue, you know.
How's it working with your condominium association, is it successful?
Yeah, we've expanded, we've dumped, we started out with, we have twelve eight-yards on site, we started out with four recycling and six garbage, now we're five and five.
Do you have them where the dumpsters were over there? Did you put them in a central location, or you locate them next to each dumpster?
Next to each other, different colors. All right?
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Sheriff, apply for the 2017 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program and 2017 Imperative Driving Enforcement Grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. This is a reimbursable grant paid from the Sheriff's Salary Account and designated traffic blitz beginning October 1st, 2016 through September 3rd, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
If you want to do the presentation now?
Sure.
Is Mike here? Mike?
At this point, we have Solar Co-op Project, Mike Challander, our Sustainability Coordinator, can give us an overview?
The speaker hasn't arrived yet.
Okay.
Well, can we do Jerry? Jerry wanted to come up and talk about the grant.
Why don't we do that? Commissioner Lundey, we have some news on the Main Street Amherst Grant that we're a collaborator on.
Yeah, Jerry Good, our Economic Development Coordinator.
Take your pick.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of our CDBG Community Development Block Grant for Amherst. Before I get into the details of exactly where we stand on the grant, I do want to give you an overview of what the process was like last year. The grant is part of what Community Development does in the way of set-aside grants. These are not the allocation grants that typically come to counties that the state allocates money for through the federal government each year. These are competitive set-aside grants in three different areas, downtown revitalization, critical infrastructure, and neighborhood revitalization. Last year, there were ninety-three applications, thirty-five were funded. Out of the thirty-five, twenty-two were critical infrastructure grants, four were downtown revitalization grants, and nine were neighborhood revitalization grants. I was told recently that of the four downtown revitalization grants, we had the second highest score in the history of the program for a application. So I think that speaks highly of our staff and our team that put together the grant application.
Good work.
What we received was three hundred thousand dollars. The breakdown of that is one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred is going to go into parking facilities in downtown Amherst. They currently have a community public parking lot that they're going to expand and add spaces to, and then they're going to take another lot and repave it. It's a dirt gravel lot today. So one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred going into that. One hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars will go into private revitalization. There were sixty-one property owners that said they look in the coming year to make investments in their properties. This will be on a competitive basis, they'll have to come forward and out of that sixty-one and tell us who wants to apply and what their funds are, how they're going to be used.
Will those individuals have to have matching funds for that grant?
Exactly, it's a fifty-fifty match. So one of the things that, so to give you the rest of the breakdown, that totals two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The grant does allow for ten percent admin. We have entered in, or are currently entering into an MOU with Main Street Amherst, where they'll get eighteen thousand of the admin dollars, we'll get twelve. What is our twelve being used for? I completed the environmental review, it's a two-tiered review for this project. The 28th of April was the end of the waiting period for, we have submitted a request for release of funds, that's part of the process, we expect to receive that any day, and then projects can start after that. But it's important to note that we internally did the environmental tiered review on this. Typically, that takes thirty days, in this case, it took sixty days because the Ohio Historic Preservation Office assigned a new person to us that had never done a tiered review before. So that added about an extra month to the process. This grant is leveraging five million one hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars of additional investment in downtown Amherst. So I think that was one of the things the state liked, was the amount of leverage in this project. So that's where we stand today. What's before you in the appropriations is this is a reimbursable grant. The city has to spend the money on the parking before we can apply and get the money back and reimburse them. Last year was the first year that the program changed the structure of this. Prior to last year, communities could apply directly to Department of Development Services Agency. Last year, they decided they would rather see that go through counties. So the application had to come through the county, and we were successful in getting this. So our role in this will be accounting for all funds and seeing they're dispersed in a timely manner.
Good job.
Great work, great work.
Any questions?
It's just exciting for the communities, and you know, I think the Amherst partnership and project is, you know, proof of the good things the government can do when everybody works together.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, Mr. Cordes.
Speaker still?
No, Mike left too, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
On his way.
He should be here soon.
Okay.
The, let me see if I can sing or dance.
I was going to say, that's where you played the piano for a while, a little vamping.
Well, it's Mother's Day this weekend, so if you're fortunate enough to still have a mom with you, please make sure you take the opportunity to spend a little extra time, because you should be spending time already.
I see mine every day.
You're a very fortunate man. I will be driving to Long Island this weekend to spend some time. People who have distant relationships, you know, truly understand how important it is. People that have their parents with them, very close, sometimes neglect to understand the privilege they have. So I will be doing that, and I wish everybody a happy Mother's Day and a very joyous weekend. With that, I have no, well, maybe I do have one additional comment since we have a little time this morning. Were you going to talk about our statistics for the dog pound yesterday at all?
No, go ahead.
We met with some of the volunteers from the dog kennel yesterday. I really like working with Fido's companion, Michelle Reichlin and Mike Sherrell, we've been partners for a couple of years now, and the relationship has really just blossomed over the last two or three years. They're very responsible people, but they're also very keenly aware of the balance between being too far on either side of the spectrum with regard to the work we need to do at the kennel, and that really makes it wonderful to work together. Some of the statistics we saw last year was that we only needed to euthanize forty-five dogs, which was down from over eight hundred a handful of years ago. And the year before that, it was sixty-three, and the number continues to fall while we partner in placements, rescues, using, excuse me, bay and neutering of the future pets. And we're examining our processes for even better efficiencies in accomplishing that. But I will tell you, no matter how the relationships, none of that would have been possible without a change in the management at the kennel that brought on what I consider a little bit more responsible, maybe a lot more responsible cooperative supervision. In the years I've been with the county, I've been to ten dog wards, and Tim is by far the best we've had. I like working with him, he does a good job. So I thought those statistics should be out there for people to know that we continue to work to make sure that these often abandoned dogs or strays are, how did Michelle put it? Re-behaviored? Because that's what a lot of, sometimes the strays are, they need to be re-educated, she says. And this rescue group actually takes these animals, puts them through behavioral training so they can be reintroduced into the community as a better companion pet. Not everyone's successful, but most are. And that was an element missing too, because a lot of times, we get some dogs that have been treated cruelly, and they need a little bit of rehab, just like some people need a little bit of rehab once in a while.
Right.
So that's all I have for this one, thank you very much.
Behavior modification, right?
Behavior modification.
Right.
Okay. I think our guest now has arrived, and so we'll now call up Michael Challander, our Sustainability Coordinator, along with his guests concerning the Solar Co-op Initiative here in Lorraine County.
I'd like to introduce you to Luke Sulfridge, and Luke is...
You have to get closer to the microphone.
You have to go to the microphone, that microphone.
Sorry.
I'd like to introduce you to Luke Sulfridge, and Luke is with Ohio Sun, and then Carl McDaniel, who is an Oberlin resident who has solar installed on his house and has had it for ten years now. Carl?
If you're in New York, eight years.
Okay. Well, they, a group of residents in Oberlin got together to create this co-op, which is a model that has been used in other parts of the country. And the co-op, I'll let Luke talk about their program.
Okay.
Well, thank you for having us, and Mike didn't mention, this is actually the first co-op for our program in the state of Ohio, so thank you for, Lorraine County, for being a leader. And Carl's a big part of that, they reached out to us really early on, we were doing exploration in the state, and wanted to make it happen here, and that's now happening as we speak. I'm part of a group called Ohio Sun, that stands for Solar United Neighborhoods. We are part of the Community Power Network, which is out of Washington, DC. Our program started originally when a mother had to respond to her son. Her son came home and said, he'd saw the movie Inconvenient Truth and felt really compelled to do something right then about it, back in 2007. Him and his young friend were inspired, mom thinking she was being clever at the time said, you know, let's go get our neighbors together if we're going to do this, and thought it would be so cumbersome that he wouldn't want to take it on. Well, the son went the other direction. Within a week, we're canvassing the entire neighborhood and reaching out to see who wanted to do it together. And as they had those initial conversations as a homeowner, found it really difficult at that time period to go solar. The market wasn't really geared up for the residential sector at that point, and it was really complicated and complex process, if you can imagine, doing installation like that and trying to wager your way through both the technology, some fairly complex contracts. And as a result, they decided it really did make sense to include their neighbors in this process. So that started the Mount Pleasant Solar Co-op in 2007. Since then, other neighborhoods in DC became really interested in the program as well and said, come help us over here, they got a lot of great press. And pretty shortly after that, the program started to expand pretty rapidly. So DC being connected to several states right there properly, they soon became a program in Virginia, Maryland, West Virginia, and DC obviously. And here, just this year, January, we actually added Ohio and most recently Florida. The co-op model enables homeowners to go together and also to receive a discount. So like anything else that you buy in bulk or go together, we're able to do that in aggregation, and as a result, the installers are really able to save a lot of money in their customer acquisition costs. Solar as an industry has grown twenty percent last year to this year, and it continues to rapidly grow, so it's really a great opportunity for jobs to grow along with doing the right thing. And we really tell folks, we try to build a really broad-based coalition with these solar co-ops and really tell them, we don't necessarily need to know why they're going solar, we're going to show them how and really educate them if they want to be engaged and involved. So as part of our process, we look for community partners to partner with us, and in this case, it was a group of residents in Oberlin who really drove the initiative. At our first meeting, we had well over ninety individuals attend, which was phenomenal and really exciting to start out. And of that, now we have fifty-plus homeowners, and I'm happy to say Mike is one of them, who have signed up to go solar through the program. Before we got to that phase though, we do a competitive bidding process. So one of the things that we are able to provide for the homeowners, we solicit bids like you would for any big contract, and fifty homeowners together becomes a pretty substantial bid. So we do that and we solicit it very broadly, and then we're able to sort through the bids and really pare them down to a spreadsheet so they can do an apples-to-apples comparison. And within a three-hour meeting, folks in Oberlin had made the decision of which installer they're selecting. That company's Third Sun, they are based in Athens but have offices all over the state, and they're reaching out to homeowners right now directly. And we've done a lot of grassroots things to promote the program, from flyers, promote the community meetings, the Green Edge Fund through Oberlin College, the Student Fund really helped us promote the program as well. So every community's a little different in who willing to step forward, but in this community, really happy we had really broad-based support. And so that's one step of the process. After that, the homeowners actually work with the installers. We do a roof review initially through our program and screen folks to make sure they're a good fit for the program. We also do a lot of education with the homeowners. We don't want folks investing money on a roof that's going to need replaced very quickly, so we try to, we are nonprofit, we're a 501(c)(3) ourselves, so we really try to help them through those kind of considerations. Also through the bids themselves, we help them really understand the difference in panel technology, what the financing options are, and what the different decision points are along that way. What we work out with the installers is a per-watt price, so everyone in the co-op receives the same price based on a per-watt, yeah, per-watt price. And then if there are any unique circumstances to the home, that's negotiated upfront as well as part of the contract. The entire process takes about six to seven months, so it's a very quick turnaround. So here in about a six-month timeframe, there are hopefully going to be fifty new homes going solar in Oberlin. I mentioned that fifty homeowners that are signed up right now, some of them may decide at some point throughout the process that they don't want to continue, or they may want to go solar a little bit later, decide that they don't want to spend the money right now. And that's perfectly fine as well. We're going to continue to recruit folks for this co-op through June 15th, and that enables more folks to come in, and we hope at the very end of the process, we'll have at least fifty homeowners, if not considerably more than that. So we're really excited to be here, and yeah, I really thank you guys for inviting us and sharing a little bit of our program.
With solar, there's lots of considerations in the communities, right? Local regulations to jurisdictions, HOAs, condo associations, all that has to be worked through before you can do a solar installation, correct? Mike, would you come to the mic, please?
That's true.
Yeah, I just don't, I think that I should caution, and I think this is a great thing, as you know, you and I are both on geothermal right now, I'm surprised you're going to solar. But this, that doesn't affect the look and features of a home as much as solar does, so I would hope that when people engage with you, that we're making sure that they're not going down a road, that their HOA or community does not allow solar installation.
Did you tell who was selected as the...
I did.
Okay. So Third Sun Solar has done hundreds, if not thousands, of installations throughout the state, and so they're very familiar with the processes that need to be taken. For instance, contacting the electric utility and getting the special meter that's required for solar installations, and then the host of permits that may be required in each community. So they, in their bid, they said they would take care of all that backroom sort of thing.
Because sometimes you're in an HOA and they don't allow that.
Right.
Simple as that, because of the nature of the look, let's face facts, solar panels are very... Let's face fact, solar panels are very visible in most installations. You may love them, but your neighbors may not. So I just want to make sure that we're not getting anybody too far down the road and then they come back and say, well, they made this presentation with the county commissioners and you guys didn't tell me this and we know better than not to say things like this upfront because some people get angry at us very quickly.
Well, Third Sun, it said they would take care of all the back room stuff, so they would contact each community where they have a possible installation to ensure that they follow correct procedures.
Can you give some data on, historical data, not specific data, on recovery, ROI, on solar as it relates to conventional? I'm not going to actually compare it to geothermal or other options, but at least a conventional. What would be the normal recovery period for a homeowner in the city, an investment in this technology, to be able to gain ground rather than losing it?
Approximately seven to ten years, is that what you would expect, Carl?
The numbers are actually a little bit longer than that. When we, I run-
If you could step up to the mic, please, Carl.
I'm Carl McDaniel. I run the numbers for what Third Sun is going to do and the price we look at, it could go a little bit lower, but the return is somewhere between twelve and fifteen years.
And how long is the equipment good for, Carl?
I have colleagues who have panels that are still putting out eighty percent of, they're saying they're forty years old. So the decay rate on panels is less than one percent per year. So there's quite a long life with them and they usually require very little maintenance unless you have a huge hailstorm and you should have insurance for that. But they just, they, I've had a system in our home for over ten years now and back then, I paid a lot more and my payback at that time was probably much more, somewhere between twenty-five and thirty years. The problem is, it's very difficult to make these calculations because we do not know what the cost of energy is going to be. And so if the cost of energy goes down, obviously it's just going to take longer. If it goes up, it's going to take shorter. But if you look at that now, if you were to just say, you know, thirteen, fourteen years would be a reasonable number with what Ohio Sun is doing with Third Energy here in Lorraine County. And then you're going to look at for the rest of your life, the energy is free, other than maintenance for your solar panels, which should be. I mean, the inverters may have a problem, but that's probably fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. So I think it's a very, very wonderful investment to do and it pays, my important payback time, when I put it on our homes, was the carbon payback. The reason why we're shifting to renewable energy is because we're in the midst of massive climate change. And so the reason why we'd be doing this is to offset more carbon into the atmosphere. And the carbon payback time, those again, are complex calculations. The ones I've seen in the literature run about five to six, four to six years. So after that time, your carbon footprint for your electricity. And the exciting thing about putting on solar panels on your home, when you do it, people get very interested in looking at their electric meter, particularly when it's running backwards and that's really quite fun. And if you do other kinds of things in your home in terms of some of what you were talking about, geothermal or heat pumps, ground source heat pumps, you can lower the amount of electricity that you need to run your home. In our home that we built here in Oberlin in 2008, it runs on sunshine. And the basic numbers are, I don't want to go into all the details, the original system we bought from New York State, which we put on and New York State was very promoted of it and it was, we paid only one-third of the cost because weren't very many federal subsidies, but New York State had made a decision that renewables were important. We have not made that decision here in Ohio, in fact, is we're not even thinking that it's important. And so when you look at the carbon, it's very important. If you look at the economics, it's getting very favorable now and so I think people should be encouraged to think about it.
Have the, the federal subsidies and tax advantages have eroded pretty significantly recently, right, with regard to alternative entity?
No, they, actually, there was a compromise that was made in the Senate and the House and they extended the thirty percent tax credit until through nineteen, twenty nineteen, through twenty nineteen. And then if they don't change it, I think it backs off a little bit by twenty twenty and then eventually goes down to ten percent.
Now, are the tax advantages figured into the ROI for the system or is that an additional benefit that you would receive outside of the recovery period?
In the calculations that I did, I put in the thirty percent tax credit.
Into the ROI on-
Into the return on investment, yes sir.
Okay.
And I think that that's legitimate to do that and hopefully we'll get it more favorable in climate in Ohio, in Ohio, state of Ohio, so that we can push this even further.
Yeah, the state of Ohio isn't very friendly when it comes to renewable energy, huh Mike?
Not very.
Did a lot of time in Columbus working on their portfolio of standards and then they were all just trashed afterwards with the new administration, so.
What is good about solar and wind, renewable energies, is once you buy the system, you know what your energy is going to cost over the twenty-year period, whereas with the utilities, you never know what your costs are going to be.
Well, and this gentleman made a very good point early on, the condition of the roof, most of these are roof installations and you've got to have a pretty new or good roof underneath that because you don't want to try to be re-roofing soon after you put that system up there.
One thing that's nice about the solar is that the UV rays are what deteriorate the roof and the solar panels block in the UV rays, so the roof will last longer.
Yeah, you ever tried to roof around that stuff and they'll have a different color roof on the other side for one's more worn than the other, so I understand, but still, that's a consideration. Thank you for saying that because a lot of folks don't really think about that.
Yeah, I would like to echo, you know, what my colleague pointed out, you know, we've worked very hard on renewable energy portfolio standards for the state of Ohio under the Strickland administration and unfortunately, the new governor decided to basically take us back to the caveman days. And I was very concerned about that because, you know, we are a state that's very, very proud of the work that we do in manufacturing and felt there was a real growth opportunity there for us to be producing all components for renewable energy. And it was a major setback, a very big win for the corporate utilities through the, what's supposed to be the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, I think is really the Corporate Utilities Commission of Ohio on most days, unfortunately. And I know this county has worked very hard on the offshore wind initiative, which was something that, inside baseball story, I was trying to get an amendment into the, into one of the bills talking about a percentage of energy coming from offshore wind into that bill and the Speaker of the House told my leadership that Lundie can stand there until hell freezes over, I will never call on him and, you know. But some of those same people, I'm sure when they'll be running for governor, will be talking about how important, you know, renewable energy is and offshore wind and those kinds of things. So be interesting to see if somebody by the last name of Houston brings that up or not. But-
Not to mention any names.
Not to mention any names. But I would just also encourage you, you know, in this county, we're all about trying to do as much as we can local as well too and I'm glad that you found, you know, a strong vendor you're working with out of Athens, but we would just ask that you try to do as much outreach and exploration to find out, you know, who the local individuals are who can possibly work on these initiatives and, because I know more and more consumers keep asking the question, hey, I want to make sure this is, this is local, you know, that this is going to help benefit the local economy. But very supportive of what you're doing, I think it's very important.
So one thing we do, we do break down when the selection committee of volunteers meets to determine which vendor we're going to go with and it's entirely volunteer-made decision. They do have weighted criteria, so in this case, as you'd expect, Lorraine County had fairly high consideration to the social values. And one thing we are working with them right now that they committed to upfront prior to being selected was doing some kind of local internship slash job development program. So there may be very real opportunities for real jobs to be created through this program, so we're excited about that partnership and we're continuing to have conversations about that here very quickly, actually.
I'd like to just make a comment about the concern about roofs and that makes me want to make a comment about the way Ohio Sun and Community Power Networks work and why it's so advantageous to do this through a co-op is they take care of all of the, well, the back office sort of things you talk about. And one of the things, when we were going through the negotiation with the members of the co-op, for them to select the installer, we, the questions were asked of the installers, what if you have to replace the roof? What are you going to have in memorandum of understanding with this and the contracts that are going to be signed, is what is the cost if you have to do it? And I think that, and those have been brought there. So people are aware of this right up front and that's the thing that's so important about doing it through an organization like Ohio Sun, is that everything is on the table and they know what they're doing. That's why we, the group of us in Oberlin, Oberlin Community Energy Coalition, we were excited to find out about this because we were struggling to, how are we going to do this? And some of us homeowners had done it, but we did not know all the details that they have. And so you, as a citizen who might not know a lot, you come there with all of this information behind you, you can ask questions and it's made easy, so it's very important. And I just give you one of these that you have.
Yeah, we already have.
We have all they, Carl.
We have it.
Yeah, we have.
We got it right here.
We got it right here.
Yeah, look at that, I got, we got green and-
Oh, that was different.
No, okay.
All right. Sure, thank you.
And a final, final comment is that-
Thanks, Carl.
On a final comment, there's three different types of panels that are available to the homeowner. Kiosera is one model, Panasonic is another, but the third choice is Sunevia, which is a new company that established a manufacturing plant in Saginaw, Michigan, so that's American-made.
You do have to have traditional utilities to back up the solar, do you not?
Yes.
Okay, I thought-
Yes, it's called net metering.
Not always sunny here in Ohio. Go ahead.
It's a special net metering, it's a special meter that if you're using less than the solar's producing, the meter will actually run backwards. And then at the end of the month, when the utility reads your meter, it can tell how much you used over the last billing period.
Does that work on sampling meters?
On sampling meters? I'm not, I'm not aware of-
Like the one I have?
On your meter? No, no, it does not. It would have to be a, it's a different meter.
I have so much power coming in my house, I don't have a meter. I have a meter, but it only samples it and does a ratio.
Right.
It's pretty big.
Current transformers.
Yeah, I know.
You can give electricity to the neighborhood.
Share with them.
I have six hundred plus watts coming into my house, so it's pretty, pretty big. So you're going to go, I just have one last question, you're going to go from your geothermal to solar?
Well, the solar's going to work to complement the geothermal. My, I did, or Third Sun did an analysis and with the space on my house, three point seven KW of solar panels, which I think it's eighteen panels, will cut my bill down twenty-five percent for the year.
And what did you figure your ROI was?
It was ten years.
We should have a conversation.
Okay. And then, and then too, what this, what this company did, they said if they install more solar than what they anticipated, then there could be an additional credit coming back to the purchasers. And to lower that cost, all you need is a couple big commercial types of jobs to be included in that and it would really help support the initiative for everyone.
Speaking of solar, Mike, any, with that commercial entity we've been working with in the past year, any update?
Any update on-
The folks that we've been working with on that large commercial installation?
Oh, no updates on that one as of yet, but this is a new company and we could reach out to see if they're interested in talking with Third Sun.
Yeah, you know, just for a record, the reason I have so much amperage coming into my house, I think I said watts, was because of the emergency backup heat, you've got to go on to the electric if you don't, if you have a problem with your geothermal. So that's, that, you don't use that much, you've just got to have it available for those electric heaters if they come on.
Right, in case your heat pump goes down.
Just clarify a little bit on what we provide the homeowner on the return of investment, that sheet that you received as well, if you look at it, it gives them the one year out as far as what their actual cost is to the system. So being an energy cost is really unpredictable, we know it's going to go up over time. We try to leave those assumptions out so that we're giving the worst-case scenario in a very conservative estimate, so the fifteen-year mark would be a very conservative estimate based on current fuel prices. So if you think gas is going to stay at two dollars a gallon forever, that's probably going to be your number, but if you think it's going to go up, in all likelihood, the return of investment is going to be much-
Yeah, most everybody I talk to about this is, it's the cost of the systems that always seem to be a barrier to getting more people involved. It's the same thing with geothermal, the upfront cost is very significant if you don't have the patience to wait out the cost savings later.
Absolutely, and there are a couple of other things, the panels themselves have dropped about fifty, yeah, about fifty percent in the last five years. A lot of that's based on Germany really taking a lead. Germany now has over half the power coming from renewables. So really that curve is kind of a hockey stick, we're at the very significant savings and the economy scales, really scaled up at this point, so we feel very confident that now's a really good time.
Has anybody done an analysis of resale value of a home that is on an alternative energy source?
They have. The, within the last couple of years, the National Renewable Energies Lab has done some studies and one thing holding it, they have determined that there are real value and gains, but one thing that's holding it back right now is the comparables. So more folks that have it within the real estate market, that's going to help facilitate that in real terms for folks.
Yeah, on that, they've run some studies in California where they built neighborhoods with houses, in one area that had solar panels on them and ones that didn't and this was done in the late nineties and they found out that there was a higher resale value for the houses with the PV on them and that the turnover was more rapid. And I'm sure there's more studies that are much better, not better done, but that. I also want to just clarify something, geothermal or heat pumps don't make electricity, they use electricity. And the reason why they're important, we have one, put one in our house, it's because we can heat our house and cool our house for three hundred dollars a year, period. That's the total bill, but we make our own electricity, so it really doesn't cost the same thing. They're very complimentary. If you have a heat pump, you would, you've now reduced your energy consumption, which is what you want to do, so that a smaller and smaller set of panels can handle your load.
Thanks, Carl.
A lot of good information. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Commissioner's report. You didn't have anything else, Jim, did you?
No.
Okay. Commissioner's report.
It was just a good, it was just a good presentation.
Yeah.
Okay, last Wednesday, I attended the official, elected officials reception at Parker's Grill in Avon Lake, had a very nice turnout there. Thursday morning, early morning, went out to Oberlin to have an interview with WEOL to talk about our cab program, which is the clean and beautiful trailer that's available through our solid waste department. Any volunteer group or organization can request to use this trailer. It has shovels, rakes, lawn mowers, pressure washers, rototiller, leaf blower and weed trimmer. So you can keep this cab for up to seventy-two hours and actually, if you needed it for an extended period of time, I'm sure they could let you have it a little longer, but so that's available and we were just trying to promote that because we, we have four of them actually, two bigger ones and two smaller ones, so they're available to the public for their use. That evening at five o'clock, we did a proclamation at the Workers Memorial in Lorraine. And Friday, I met with the Emergency Management Committee to talk about a grant that we are able to apply for. We have a lot of needs in Lorraine County, especially in lieu of the RNC coming to Cleveland and some of the overflow that we anticipate coming here, but unfortunately, this grant, the money won't come until after the RNC is here and gone, so that's unfortunate. Then that evening was the chairman's banquet for the Democrat Party and we honored Amy James Brown from the UAW and Terry Murray. It was a nice event, great food, a lot of great people at that event. Saturday, congratulations to Commissioner Lundie and Martha on their wedding. It was a beautiful day, you have a beautiful bride and it was really good food there too, by the way. I wish those people were from Lorraine County. We could use them at our transportation center.
The caterers, yeah.
The caterers were great, yeah.
That's through the Metro Parks facility and they have a contract with that. That's the caterer you use, but they did good work.
Very good, very nice servers too. Very good, very nice servers too. Then the Disabled American Veterans had a steak fry that I went to that evening and then, uh, a surprise party. I think you know Jeff Mazzuric turned 50. So happy 50th birthday to Jeff. Sunday, I do a lot of eating these days. I went to, um, IAV, had a pancake breakfast, which was very good.
Lorain Lions Club.
For the Lorain Lions Club, correct? And then, um, Monday I went down to Columbus. They had an opiate conference. They had it actually for Monday and Tuesday, but I, I couldn't make it to the Tuesday, uh, event. They had 900 people on Monday and expected 1,100 people to attend on Tuesday. Um, a couple of things, they had a, a gap packet and it is, um, grief action prevention and it's given to people who have lost somebody due to an overdose. Um, they're offering them to coroners and funeral homes and, and things to help people with their grieving process. And then a, a woman who lost her son, um, to an overdose, she has, it's called brave choices when I talked to our sheriff about it. Um, it's a packet that the first responders take with them and leave at a scene of an overdose. And it's for, if the addict survives, how to get them help and if they don't survive, to help them with their grieving process. So it was a, a really, really good event, um, down in Columbus. And obviously the, the problem is not just here, it's in a lot of, uh, places throughout Ohio. One of the things that were thrown out there was $600 billion is going, um, is costing the state of Ohio every year because of this epidemic. So, um, there wasn't a lot of answers. I, I attended one to try to find out about getting funding to help combat this. Basically there isn't any money laying around anywhere. It's just all about how to apply for grants. So I guess that's the only way we're going to be able to get money for that. And then on the drug, uh, thing, uh, the sheriff's office sent a, a total of the prescriptions drop-offs this past Saturday and they had 178 boxes throughout Lorain County and equal to 3,190 pounds of prescription drugs that were turned in on this past Saturday, so. And I think that is the end of my report.
Okay.
Lot of stuff.
Yeah, well, I can repeat the elected officials reception. Thank you for, um, the BIA, the Chamber, Team Lorain County, Lila for organizing it and I see them out at Parker's. Again, Workers Memorial, uh, in Lorain. Uh, no, somber time to talk about the workers we've lost in the past year, uh, good workplace safety. Also, uh, Northeast Ohio Area White Coordinating Agency, NOAC, had its annual legislative meet and greet. We met with elected officials from around the state, from, uh, our state senate and, and our state representatives discussing issues in regards to transportation. Again, chairman's banquet and I see David Pepper up here. Uh, also Rosen, Joe Gee and all the volunteers who put together Disabled American Veterans Steak Fry, Lions Pancake, always a huge success. Elyria School had their, uh, annual Cinco de Mayo fundraiser last evening. Uh, myself, Commissioner Lundie attended. Great turnout as always. Uh, Dr. John was doing a fantastic job with his staff and his board. It looks like Elyria Schools are on the right path, so. End of my report.
Also enjoyed, uh, attending the elected officials' reception there in Avon Lake at Parker's Grill. Good work by the Chamber and the BIA. It's always nice, uh, I think for leaders in the community to have a chance to put a, you know, face with the name and actually have a one-on-one conversation about what's going on and, uh, that's always a really important event. I know that many, many elected officials, uh, attend, so very well organized. Had a chance to participate in the Workers Memorial, um, here in Elyria, uh, not in Lorain that day, but, uh, just very important for us all to remember when we see, uh, new buildings, new bridges that, uh, you know, uh, too often folks, uh, you know, get injured along the way. But, you know, it's, as I always say, there's, there's a reason why families nowadays are able to, uh, support their families, buy a home, have good healthcare, come home with their limbs attached and come home alive. And that's because of, uh, organized labor and all that they've done to, to make the workplace safer, uh, for the workers here in America. And so thank you to them and our prayers obviously go out to the workers that are lost each and every year on the job. People expect, you know, when you go to work, they expect that loved one to come home. They don't expect that loved one to die on the job. Also the county party banquet, uh, Friday night, uh, very well organized, very well attended. Want to thank everyone for the nice, uh, cards, well wishes, uh, on my wedding there Saturday. The good Lord, uh, made sure that sun came out and the rain held off until everything wrapped up and, uh, just, the Metro Parks, uh, run a really nice facility over there at Lakeview Park and, uh, you know, have a good arrangement there with their caterer and the food was good and, and everything went really well. I'm still trying to figure out why Commissioner Kalo shouted out dead man walking when I walked in the, the room, but, uh, I'll figure that one out. The Elyria Schools, the Elyria Schools Foundation, uh, had a great Cinco de Mayo fundraiser over there at Nick Abraham and, you know, I think in, in a lot of communities, whether it's Lorain County or other counties, uh, boy, these car dealerships just always step up to help out with, you know, community events and church events and whatever it may be. And, you know, when you got to go in there and clear out your cars so you can bring all these tables in and set up for events, they do that for the pizza challenge too over there. So, um, just a, a good community business there. And the Elyria Schools Foundation, Tom Jama, doing, doing a great job with the Elyria City Schools, gave a state of the school address, uh, about two weeks ago and, um, just lots of exciting things happening, uh, in the Elyria, in the Elyria School system. And looking forward to Art Song, um, coming up, uh, this evening, kind of a preview of Firefish. And if you did not participate in Firefish last year, boy, you've got to, got to make that event. It'll just blow you away. It is just awesome. And the Art Song is taking place this evening at the Carnegie Center and looking forward to see what kind of creative things will take place there because when those folks get together, it's always very creative and very well done. So, uh, that completes my report.
Board correspondents.
I move that we approve, uh, the board correspondents and waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to share any thoughts, concerns, questions, public comment? No? Okay, seeing no public comment, I move that we go into executive session to discuss, uh, personnel issues that were outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.